Where we lose half the council in like three minutes.
I'm glad I'm not lost. And it's a good thing you're not lost because you're in the woods, deep in the woods. I get lost in the woods.
Maybe traffic was bad.
Yeah. Like this morning for our first meeting of the day.
I was late because of traffic up the stairs.
Yeah.
Oh, it's been a day. I went to the mall over the weekend because I needed a little retail therapy and.
Carolyn, hold on, I'm excuse me for a second. I believe they are streaming it with TVC TV right now.
Alright, so I think I'm looking for Council Morrison still and.
He's entering the room right now.
And Nancy, that's Paul.
Sorry, I couldn't find the correct link. It was buried. I apologize.
Are we accepting everybody tonight or is Valerie going to be here too?
Give Nancy another minute. If not, we'll go ahead and kick this off.
Counselor Grimes logging in right now.
We can hear you Maria. Yep. Taking a while to connect audio for Nancy. Alright, so it looks like we've got all the counselors who are going to attend tonight. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the October 12th City of Tuolton Work Session. We've got two items here to discuss tonight. First thing is the Southwest Corridor Project, and I believe Garrett will be leading this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I've got a short presentation and then we'll open it for discussions on the share screen. Alright, so tonight I'm here to present on the Southwest Corridor Project, two documents, a memorandum of understanding and letter of support which are both in your packet. So again, the Southwest Corridor Plan, that's the, it's mainly served by a light rail, but it's includes a lot of other elements in connecting Portland to Bridgeport Village, a 12-mile connection. Again, the main decision makers on this are the TRIMET and their board as they'll be the ones that are applying for the federal funding on the project. But if we look at our handy transportation map here, this includes city, county, regional, and state levels as well on the project. So the main purpose of the memorandum of understanding is really to detail the shared interest between Tuolton and TRIMET. It clarifies our issues to be addressed, and it does not obligate Tuolton to fund any part of the light rail system. As just a quick history, in 2015, the City of Tuolton signed an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, with TRIMET Metro and other project partners for this project. In 2018, the City of Tuolton, we provided a letter of support for the locally preferred alternative when that was selected at the end of the environmental study process. And then for 2020, that's where we're here today with this memorandum of understanding and letter of support. So I'll walk through each one of the items on the MOU as we look at the chart. So number one, this talks about Tuolton's concerns for pedestrian improvements. If you're having people on foot as they go people shopping or a lot of people actually going to work from the station. Number nine was was one of TRIMET's additions, but it's to talk about to allow for some design flexibility with the bus turnaround. So if they do look to expand that area, you can provide a more seamless connection. If you were to get off the bus, you could get right on there at the light rail station. Number two talks about Tuolton's interest in partnering with transit-oriented development or private development that occurs around the station to help make sure that's coordinated. Number three talks about Tuolton's desire to see 900 plus, to see the maximum amount of parking spaces there at the park and ride to meet what really scores well in the federal application that are new riders that would be coming into the transit system. Number four talks about continuing to look at design options that would move people out of the park and ride and directly onto I-5 and not have to send them through the massive Lower Boones, 72nd, that intersection. Number five talks about not precluding any southern extension in how the light rail station is set up. Number six, you can see there's a little small blue dotted line on the bottom middle of the screen next to the number. And it as a not funded in the project, but part of it is a trail, a wider trail that would go along Lower Boones Ferry that would help people more easily run bike and walk between the station and downtown Tuolton. And so we would hope that TRIMET would help partner with us to find funding where that might be. Um, being that this park and ride is going to be a pretty large structure, right adjacent to the highway, in addition to the pedestrian bridge. We really think, and we've heard this from Bridgeport Village as well, we would like to be included on the architecture and design and signage and how that looks. And so this really details our intention to be, to make sure that we're still a part of that conversation. Number 11 talks about the connection between Wes and this line and not at minimum not precluding that really a joint station between Wes and Max, but to possibly look in the future for the the project for TRIMET and other parties to look at what's the feasibility of actually getting a station there. Number seven and 12 talk about Upper Boones Ferry and our interest to see that above grade still studied and looked at in the project. And to if the project does fall short, to really try to make it as far south as possible. And that way it would benefit Tuolton because if it would basically mean that there's a shorter gap for them to build if money does need to be found in the future. And then number 10, finally, and our wonderful Public Works Director reminds me of this all the time, but we really have one main water line coming into Tuolton and this light rail does cross it. And so even though this project, and it crosses it in different locations in Tigard, but we still in Tuolton want to be a part of that conversation when you're designing how that overcrosses because that's such a critical lifeline in our community. So the letter of support, that is a real benefit for TRIMET when they apply for their federal application. Because the federal government, the Federal Transit Administration is going to see how risky is this project? And the more local support that they can show, they'll say, well, they'll give it a lower risk rating. And that not only makes it competitive versus other projects, but it lowers the amount of contingency. And contingency, if you don't know what that is, it's really important because it it's basically a budget line item that that needs to be carried at the beginning of the project in case there are costs overrun and go through it. But if you can lower that contingency, you can actually lessen the amount of money that you have to bring into the project and have it sit in a budget line item, and you can put it back into the project and fund needed items that are currently kind of underfunded or there's a funding gap. And so that's a technical piece. We I'd probably talk too much about that, but we'll keep going on. So finally, that's really the the documents that are before you. The memorandum of understanding, we've provided this document to TRIMET. It was very friendly received. There were only a few minor friendly edits that were proposed. And so we see this as a collaborative partnership. If the funding measure passes, this, the project takes on a really key stage next year where it jumps from 30 to 60% design and it enters the federal application process. If the funding measure in this November fails, the project is still going to complete their their planning, their study part of this with the federal environmental study and conceptual design report. So it could be key to have Tuolton's interests listed as those documents are finalized out into next spring. So I'll stop talking now, stop screen sharing, and I'm here for any questions that you you may have. Thank you.
Alright, questions for Garrett as people start popping back up? Wow, this is this is weird. Everything's too quiet here tonight. There's just no questions for Garrett. He nailed it.
Yeah, not a question, but compliment to both Garrett and Aquila. This has been a long ride. And I was really happy to read through all the numbered points in the MOU and see that it matched up with a lot of or all of the discussions that we had with TRIMET, Metro, and everyone else. And it does represent, I think, the best possible outcome for Tuolton, and we couldn't have gotten there without your two contributions. So thank you.
We had an excellent steering committee member. So you've done you've done well and Mr. Counselor Morrison as well in filling in. So thank you.
Yeah, real quick, I'll just second everything that Counselor Kellogg said and Garrett and Aquila and Aquila. You'll hear this, I'm sure, more than once tonight. We're going to miss you. I'm going to sincerely miss you. But Garrett, no, you guys have done an amazing job of, I think, listening to what the council and listening to what the community was saying and then continually highlighting it. And Counselor Kellogg, you continually have been a tremendous advocate for us at the at all those meetings, which were at times very contentious, I would say. And there were a couple of people there who got a little rather, well, let's just say that it wasn't always smooth sailing. And it's just been, it's been a great process to watch it all come together and to see at least, and I don't know what we'll get at the end of the day, but at least we have people listening to us and I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Because I just have one. Right, so question Garrett. So people have been asking me, in the event the Metro request that's in front of the voters here next few days fails, you mentioned that they'll still finish up the planning and design of the project. So can you talk just briefly about that? How in the event this does, if it does fail, that they're just not going to stop? They will finish this up and complete the design and try to move something or maybe later?
Yeah, so so within the next four to five months, Metro is in charge with the federal environmental study, and so they will complete that document. And we've heard that they'll submit it to the feds to try to get a record of decision or a rod that's referred to. And that rod is important because it really, the federal government then verifies that you did, you did a good job planning this. You've cleared it through all the the federal hurdles. And the rod actually will stick for a good number of years. And so it's important that it's, I would say, and at the point from an engineering standpoint, the plans are at about 30% design. And so I think that's where TRIMET will bring their plans up to 30% design by in four to five months. Metro will finish the the federal environmental study. They'll try to get the record of decision, which comes, I think, 30 to 60 days after they finish their plans. And then we'll at least have this document that's in place that says what could be built and what has been cleared through the federal government.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you. Okay. Wow, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. That never happens. Alright, so moving on to item number two, the regional land use and transportation update. Is that still Garrett?
Yes, and maybe Garrett will just be extra long-winded on this one.
That's it. So this is the tag team of Heard, Ravitch, Pryor, and Associates bringing you. And oh, yeah, I mean, I I'm a former planner, so I can. Let's go here. Alright, so good evening, members of council. This is your quarter three of 2020 Regional Land Use and Transportation Update. So again, the purpose of these updates is to highlight the top projects in this quarter that are receiving public input to discuss coordination with city councils, staff, and or community input. And then you'll also see a larger directory of projects that are the top three active and less active that you may be hearing about. And we would love to, if you have questions about those, highlight those. We can get those to those at the end as well. So I'm sorry to, you know, show this picture, but this is tolling, and this is a project that has been going on, and I wanted to update you on some important decisions that have been made at the Oregon Transportation Commission. Again, if we orient ourselves to the transportation policy and funding map, one of the main committees that is input on this is the Region One Area Commission on Transportation. They provide a recommendation or they provide feedback to the Oregon Transportation Commission, which really oversees and directs ODOT's work in the state. So at their September meeting, the Oregon Transportation Commission approved a recommendation that the net toll revenues on the corridors from which they were collected will be spent there. And and I'll show you here in a second a map of what they referred to as the 205 corridor, which was a bit different than maybe I had envisioned. What was the geographic scope of that? Um, but what what I thought was a really positive step for us was to have the Chair Van Brocklin call for a finance and implementation report to go along with the the federal environmental study. Because I think we have been posing a lot of questions as of other cities of, you know, what exactly is going to be funded with tolling revenues and what isn't? And if we can start knowing that sooner, or if we can know that as this project goes along in the process, I think that that then you can at least discern or understand, you know, what what's going to be improved with this. And so the map they were referring to when they, when the OTC provided their recommendation of the 205 corridor is the green line that you see on the screen, which is really the majority of I-205 from the 205 split to the Columbia River. And so revenues that would be collected in the tolling area, as you see there on the bottom of the screen, could be spent on along that entire corridor. One of our most poignant questions we've been pushing is, so why this area of 205 and not why not the larger region? And the the commission addressed that question specifically, and they pointed to this map as that this, this is their regional strategy for congestion pricing, tolling improvements in the Portland Metro area. And so I won't go through each one of these projects. I'll let you kind of sift through it if you want to, but I just wanted to provide this context and what the OTC is envisioning for the future of of the region. What's also important to note is if we're thinking about what could be funded by toll revenues, we first want to look at what's already on the books today that should be funded or is in the ODOT plan. And so you can see here, there's things like the the I-205, the widening and the repair of the bridge. But they also have a bike ped crossing of the Willamette River. They have transit and safety projects along McLaughlin Boulevard. They've got the Bus on Shoulder Pilot between Smart and ODOT, a bike ped bridge in Wilsonville. And so if these are the projects today, you know, you have to think, well, if you have tolling revenues, the state is going to look to their identified priorities. And so if we, if there are things missing that are not on this list, that is something that we would want to advocate for throughout this study process. So other happenings, there's an equity committee that's ongoing. Dwight Brusheer from Smart and Abe Mullen from Clackamas County, I've been meeting with them because they responded really well to our equity comments that we were raising. They have a lot of similar concerns. And so I think we have a couple of good allies and people who are really going to speak and help carry Tuolton's message there. And so I've been in contact with them through Clackamas County. They, on that revenue decision that the OTC was looking at, there was a comment letter sent from the Clackamas County Cities. Then the the National Environmental Policy Act or that beginning stages of the environmental study was their their first public comment period has ended, and those responses are being gathered. And they continue to have or are beginning to now have their next round of staff committee meetings to talk about technical issues. And so I'll pause there. I'll stop the screen sharing to if there are any comments or questions on tolling at this time and what you've heard about in quarter three.
Mr. Garrett. Counselor Kellogg.
Yeah, Garrett, going back to your map of the comprehensive congestion management plan, I noted that the area south of 205 on I-5 is in purple, which notes that it's an expanded toll corridor. So has there finally been a realization that maybe the toll ought to go all the way down to the Boone Bridge?
I don't, that's surprising. I could investigate that question. I know that I don't think so because I think they're going to, they're still pointing to Travis Brower, the assistant for ODOT, still points to that staff, the legislative language that the toll, basically the terminus ends at the I-5 205 intersection. But that's, you bring up a good point. That's something we could look into.
Right, well, that's the same language. It says the entirety of the 205 down to the river is going to be told, and we know that's not the case based on the current plan. So yeah, I'd be interested to know why that's colored in purple, and if that was a mistake, then don't inform them of it. Also, was there any discussion about the duration of this infrastructure? So, you know, is the idea that tolling from the Abernathy Bridge back to Stafford Road is going to stay there forever and that that would pay for any future improvements to 205? Or would they move the tolling infrastructure at some point after the Abernathy Bridge was improved?
I think that's still a question to be determined. I haven't heard the 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 kind of proposition that the tolling infrastructure would be moved. I have heard them discussing, so once you pay for these initial improvements in the bridge and the widening, does the toll continue? And I think that's still a question to be determined.
Okay, and then any update on our comment about moving the tolling infrastructure west of Stafford Road?
I have not seen any, like, I've not seen any new alternatives that would include that option. No.
Alright, well, just next time remind them of their own numbers that say, you know, traffic congestion is going to increase 90% on Borland Road and Stafford, if that's where the tolling infrastructure is put, it'd be a disaster.
Garrett, question. Oh, sorry.
Now, Paul then Maria.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Garrett, the the map that you showed, which shows their kind of intent for the area, only has 99 as the only route besides the 205. But I was under the impression that there were a lot of discussions, and I thought there there was some buy-in to also. And now without the map, I'm going to get the number wrong, but it's 43 or 46 that goes through Lake Oswego and continues through Milwaukee. And that actually made, I thought was on the 2020 plan, it was a concession that was made to add that in, but that seems to be missing from their map of any type of improvement, as well as, as Counselor Kellogg pointed out, they're they're not showing that any money would be spent on Borland or on Stafford or any other alternative, including what could also be a no-brainer is that's the, rather than Borland Road, which is a huge problem for everyone, and I would agree with that, but going south of the 205 freeway and creating another Borland Road before anybody built there. And I know that Mayor Nat brought that up. I know that the mayor of Westland brought that up, as did, I believe, Commissioner Savas at meetings over the, I mean, and again, these meetings just kind of blend anyone another there. There's been so many, and it's been the lead conversation on so many different groups. But if you just add that to your notes, and I just would be curious if we could follow that that thought process along.
Well, I think I think what the that funding and implementation plan that Chair Van Brocklin was was kind of pushing ODOT's, ODOT staff to provide. To me, I think that might be where we understand what gets funded or not in this. Because because you're correct, because there's this, this map that was provided at the commission meeting. There's the Get Moving 2020 map of new regional priorities. There's the Regional Transportation Plan, which identifies a whole list of things that are there and then aren't there. And so we need to find someplace to land on what gets funded and not with these tolling revenues. What is it spent on and not? And so, um, up until now, I had not seen a document like that in place. So that is something we need to continue to ask for.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Reyes.
Yeah, I mean, I represent the city in one of these meetings, and I haven't heard back from them on when they would have another meeting. I know they're doing the equity study right now. Have you heard anything about when they are gonna, when are we meeting again and discuss this?
Yeah, and I reached out to Clackamas County to check. And Nate, you are correct. You haven't missed anything. Their subcommittee of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, which you're on, that it works on the tolling piece, has not met since July. And so I think they were waiting, at least what I heard back from Clackamas County, that they were waiting to get through this comment period and then possibly see what was the next round of alternatives. It kind of connects into what Counselor Kellogg raised of, has anything actually changed, you know, from the alternatives and what we're looking at? And so I think they're kind of waiting on that step to drop from ODOT before they reconvene the group.
Thank you.
Other questions for as far as up to this point? So the, refresh me, I know they extended the community feedback and additional, was it two weeks, Garrett? There was about.
Not that.
November or something? So when?
Um, it's passed now, but yeah, it was it was extended another two weeks from the the previous time. Yeah.
So that was put in mid to late September, so they haven't had a lot of time to look at it yet, or they're still digesting it. Alright. Any other questions, comments so far? Right, go ahead and continue, please.
Alright. I think I'll need to be enabled to screen share again. Okay, so our next item is the, and it has multiple acronyms, but it's the House Bill 2017. but it's the House Bill Twenty Seventeen Transit Advisory Committee or also referred to as the Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund or STIF. And so if we follow our decision making chart, this really starts with the H B Twenty Seventeen Advisory Committee. They make a recommendation to the TriMet Board that is then provided to there's a a committee on public transportation, the Region One Act, and then finally to the Oregon Transportation Commission before it is approved. So at the H B Twenty Seventeen Transit Advisory Committee in their September meeting, the mayor, Susan Noack, and myself provided public comment. Each one of us hit on points about the need for greater investment in shuttles for that first and last mile connection and connections between the cities where you've seen really a lot of the growth in the region in the last twenty years. And there was the question before the advisory committee now is planning what happens in fiscal years twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four. And so the shuttles, like the Twelton Shuttle and possibly this bus on shoulder that Smart would provide, are provided through the regional coordination funding. That's the funding bucket for them. And so if you look here on the screen, the option that was recommended by the committee in their September meeting was to use a high budget projection. But for regional coordination, it was it was basically a stable three point one million for F Y twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. And so we, you know, our advocacy, our ask was to see that at minimum maintained, but possibly then increased. And so on the timeline of it will start, I believe this Friday, I'll get information from TriMet on how people can provide public comment. That will be available for three to four weeks. Again, it's on kind of the funding scenarios. And then that those funding scenarios will be locked in and sent up that decision making ladder. And then they will look at specific projects like the one you've heard about from Clackamas County of funding the Borland Shuttle and then funding the Smart Bus that would connect to Oregon City. That comes after, you know, they establish what buckets of funding, then they get to the individual projects. And so it kind of raised this as a question or a comment as far as this was what was provided last month. Just looking for any feedback on any issues or next steps. And that there will be this public comment period upcoming. And if there's any guidance from council on feedback, public, you know, public comments, we could submit from the city. All right. Thank you.
Right. Any suggestions for Garrett? I would my my one comment would be, I think the city did a terrific job of constantly putting in front of the residents here in Twalton about the Clackamas Shuttle and keeping it on folks radar and how important it is the region to connect our east-west connectivity and make sure our partner agencies like the Twelton Chamber of Commerce, Agent Task Force, the veterans organizations are all kept in the loop of how this is going and let them know when the window opens for public comment and actively engage them to do so and provide that feedback.
Thank you. And there's plenty of surveys out there now because to to basically to get money for those projects, Washington and Clackamas County both have to come up with their own plans. And so in addition to kind of what should be done with TriMet dollars, they're going to ask for public comment this next month. There's also public comment on what what should go into the Washington and Clackamas County. So we're pushing those out through our social media. We're reaching out to each one of those folks, the the good people on Borland Road. They're becoming survey experts and and continuing to push in their needs. And and they've been wonderful partners on that. So hopefully we'll have some good news here in a in a few months that that was ends up in a project.
All right.
All right. Go on to our final. All right, so this is a jurisdictional transfer study. This is a kind of a dry topic, but I'll try to make it important. You understand the weight of the real world importance. And one of the things that stands out to me, if if we just look at the map that's before us, a lot of the roads that are in blue that are owned by the state. And Counselor Morrison, you pointed this out in the tolling conversation. These are a lot of the roads that are also included in this transportation measure in November. Because these older state owned facilities are really the the center of where we have a lot of deaths of congestion, of really community concern from an environmental to life quality impact in the region. And so the study is meant to basically break the logjam that you have these old state roads and facilities that are outdated. And well, what can be done with them? How can they be paid for and up rehabbed and and turned into, you know, better quality facilities? And so O dot Metro are conducting this joint study. They're going to provide it to the Metro Council. It's not going to be an adopted document. It will be accepted. And then its findings will help influence the next regional transportation plan. And then the state is going to start updating their highway plan and their big transportation plan next year. So the closest state owned roads in Twalton are the Interstate five ninety nine W. And then there's two smaller segments of roads you may not realize that are owned by the state. But Nyberg Street around the Nyberg Interchange of I five is actually owned by the state. And then a segment of Southwest Boones Ferry Road between the Twelton River Bridge and the I five interchange. Actually, some of that is a state facility. And so they, again, they looked at what are what are all these kind of older state roads that may not or may be operating currently now a statewide need and which are kind of more local needs. And they came up with these roads, these corridors, basically, as the most promising for transfer to local ownership. That can be city or county ownership. As you can see here, the segment that's closest to us is the the ninety nine W segment of Twalton was a part of their top tier recommendation. So we've been pretty consistent. They reached out to staff. This is the first time they're asking for public comment for the general public. But we, the city of Twalton really has no interest in owning ninety nine W. That would be a pretty hefty financial task. And so for this study to be recommending that ninety nine W. Now, the study that Metro and O dot have said that they headed had thought of Washington County being the one that would receive the road with this recommendation. They've received a similar pushback from Washington County and not wanting to own ninety nine W. But if out of this study, we could get investment, a long term plan, design flexibility, like when we're doing sidewalk projects like Twelton moving forward, those could all be positives. Currently now, how this works out is each jurisdictional transfer is really negotiated differently with the state. And so if Twalton did want to own some of those state roads, we really have today no understanding of what it means to negotiate with O dot. You know, we're not sure if we're getting a good or a bad deal. And so this study could provide a template for that cost analysis. And I talked about before about just kind of some of the greater flexibility or speed control, especially if if we could be granted that through this, that would be, we do see that as favorable. And so staff, we drafted those comments. We we would like to submit comments during this public comment period and encourage others to do so. So we wanted to pause and gain some feedback from you all to help guide those as as we provide those back to O dot and Metro. So that is my presentation. Mayor, hand it back over to you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about the jurisdictional handover of ninety nine? Bridget.
My question wasn't about ninety nine, actually. The other highlighted area in our was that that was identified on the second map that was still, was that the Boones Ferry or the Nyberg?
There are, as far as their top tier recommendations, it's it's actually in Southern Tigard. It's it's along Seventy Second Avenue. But yeah, the lower Boones Ferry section didn't make it into their top tier recommendations, although it is a a state owned road here in Twelton.
And then what are the numbers, the state numbers for for the Nyberg and the Boons Ferry?
As far as like what it would cost to
No, no, the highway numbers themselves, because they were all indicated by the highway numbers on the maps.
Okay.
And I was just curious, because I'm not familiar with what are what Boons Ferry and Nyberg are called in in state highway number format.
Sure, I could I could research that and get you that answer.
It'll be good.
One forty one, isn't it? On the map, I think it's that highway one forty one.
Yeah, it looks like one forty one is Boones Ferry, but I'm not sure what Nyberg is.
Okay. Be just good to know that for me. I haven't ever seen that posted anywhere. Thank you.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, thank you. We, you know, we talked about this before. And it it seems like what the state did with this first pass was take roads that need a lot of investment and see if they can find anybody to bite and take over the investment from them. But one of the things that crossed my mind as we have gone down this road, Garrett, is as we get ready to improve TS Highway right there, just prior to right at Nyberg Road is as it we widen a part of our twenty forward plan, it might be a good idea to, and seems how apparently they're looking for somebody to take the bait on something. Maybe we can make Nyberg Road kind of a a project for them in terms of how to do something because they've already made all the improvements on the overpass and up through the Fred Meyer Interchange, Callahan Interchange. And we're going to take over and we're going to make, we're going to make major improvements to that from the the light fixture there to Martin Ozzy. And so perhaps it may be worth looking into to see, hey, what, you know, what what can we talk to you about? What can we do to move this along? And maybe is you, what really rung a bell was we talk about maybe the template that they're trying to set. And maybe this might set a different kind of template on roads that they can just get off their books that where there's not a lot of cost involved in bringing them up to standard. Now, if I'm wrong, if there's a ton of cost in addition to what we're already doing, then obviously that would be off the table. But it's my understanding that a lot of those improvements have already been made. So just a thought.
Yeah, and I think I think I would want to touch base with Jeff and Kim and our engineering folks about their just kind of initial impression on how because because really what it's called is getting it to a state of good repair. That's the that's really the the level that you want to achieve. And so if if one of our engineering folks had some initial thoughts on kind of how far away we are, to your point, I think that would be informative and and whether we would want to communicate that or not to O dot.
Yeah, and in light of the the, and I know we're we're just getting started on that. But as we get started, it might be interesting to kind of see how that looks. And again, yeah, I'm not, I'm not advocating anything. I'm just saying, hey, it since we're looking at all this, that would be a really good project, I would think, to take a little peek at and just kind of see what's there in light of the money we're going to spend on the improvements there.
Sure.
Other questions, comments for Garrett? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other on the kind of the deeper projects of active or less active? Did anybody have any questions about those projects or want to see a presentation on or further information on them in the future?
Yeah, on page eight, there's that build grant for the Salt Creek Parkway Extended. And I thought I read in some correspondence between the mayor and I think Stephen Roberts that that grant had not been obtained.
I'll I'll check on that. I can't rem, I I hadn't seen that the the F T A had published kind of who got and didn't get the grant. But I'll, I can, I can, you know, double back and see.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Brooks.
I'm also kind of curious about, I know it didn't make the cut, but the Boones Ferry section. I just think about, you know, well, first of all, all these places have this very similar thing which you're talking about where you just think of where bottleneck is, and that seems to be what we're talking about. And it's one of the things that we hope to see helped alleviated by some of the light rail. But also I'm curious about the impacts of people going to light rail. And that area seems to be tied to, you know, this the metro project. So I'm just, you know, I'm I find myself curious about that, especially because I didn't really realize that that was state owned. And I would like to know more about exactly where it is and and what we're anticipating as we move forward. And 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 we'll we'll find out more after November, but thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say briefly to that, anytime you get in development close to the state interstate, you know, that's when these come into play. So when Counselor Morrison was saying, you know, if we're doing these improvements on Twelton Sherwood, you know, well, should we also look at that, you know, ownership road there? And I could see a similar thing if we were look at through the Southwest Corridor Project or our Transportation Systems Plan Update or private development or urban renewal. Like, these are all questions where I think we would want to factor in kind of the state ownership piece and what are the pros and cons with that when we when we address them. But your point is well, well received.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, anything else on this subject? All right. Thank you very much, Garrett.
Cool. I I had a few words to say about Aquila, if we have a minute.
Sure.
I'm doing it. And I and I wrote him down so I could get through him.
Hey Bates.
Block her out, Bates, block her out. It's been an absolute joy to work with this wonderful woman, Aquila Herd Ravage. You know, she I I the Herd Ravage Prior and Associates LLC will, you know, it's it's going to be heart with our our founding partner moving away. But I I I knew from the moment I met Aquila, I was actually had been flown in from Virginia to do a kind of like a day of of job interviews at other places. But she stayed until the evening to make sure that that she was able to connect with me. And I I knew her dedication for people from that very moment was one that would continue on. She's a wonderful mix of Utah, Southern Cal, SoCal, Oregon, Tribe Called Quest, Dodgers Baseball, and Office Bowling. So you've got a full, full range of things that Aquila does and and excels at. She's a people first manager. She she's the perfect person to help me through, which was a real transition from Oregon to here. I was not expecting to bring a young one along. We had actually been kind of waiting for adoption for a little while, and so that was a surprise. Richmond, Virginia was a place I very much loved. And and so that whole kind of turmoil of new life and fatherhood and and a new place could not, I could not have found a better person to help just help help with schedule flexibility and other types of things for that. I mean, she even, she does go along with my energetic ideas at times and let me create a new position in the city. The this policy analyst, which I I mean, she even, she does go along with my energetic ideas at times and let me create a new position in the city, the, this policy analyst, which I feel just so perfectly suits my interests. And I just see her and I recognize her just very depth as a human, as a wife, as a mother, as a professional, and I'm forever grateful to call her as a friend. So, thank you, Aquila.
Wow, thank you, Garrett. That's awesome. I, I will add that he, he didn't get scared away by my Hawaiian shirt because it was the day that we like celebrated Paul Hennan's retirement and everybody had Hawaiian shirts on and pretty sure I had the worst Hawaii shirt ever.
Connected well with me, connected well, very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for setting the bar there, Garrett. Thanks. Anything else on this subject or, well, not this subject, because Aquila gets our love and adoration here a little bit. But on the subject of these priorities. All right. With that, I guess we're now into the review of our agenda. Does anyone have any questions on any item on the agenda tonight? Especially those things on consent. I'm seeing a lot of hands, okay. So the consent agenda is okay, and we have the recognition of Aquila, and there is a proclamation. Is that, Cheryl, and you going to read that or?
I'm happy to make a few comments, but I think it's appropriate for one of you to read that.
Okay.
I'll be happy to read it.
Sure, all right. With that, okay, so we got that all figured out. So we'll go ahead and do our roundtable of council updates. And we'll start with, in order of the pictures I see of your heads, Counselor Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of community kudos to hand out. The folks from Alliance Club hosted their Oktoberfest event, which I've taken my kids to for years, and it did a great job transitioning to the, the drive-through aspect of it, had great food as always for a good cause. So thanks to them. And then also, the Historical Society hosted a great program. Mayor, you were able to attend in person, and I hear that they did well replacing some of the lost revenue unfortunately from COVID. So a good program and a good result. So I want to thank those folks for making our community a great place to live.
All right, thank you. Council Morrison?
Yeah, the C4 meeting was canceled because of fire recovery efforts to a lot of the members who were involved with that organization. So there's really nothing right now. The only other thing that's coming up on the radar is I will be attending the SRO continuing conversation with the school district, both Tigard and Twelton, along with a lot of other people are involved with that. I look forward to seeing what comes of that. And there's a C4 Subcommittee meeting that was moved up to this Wednesday, but there's really nothing on the agenda that we haven't already discussed repeatedly, but I'll bring an update at the next meeting.
Thank you. Council Reyes?
Hi, everyone. Well, I actually attended our first Council Committee Advisory Appointment after, I think the first, the last one we did was back in February or that was the last one of March, I think. And then we finally met via Zoom and it was Counselor Brooks and myself, we met with a, some really great candidates for the library and but it, I was, anyway, it was a really great, it was really good to see people and from our community wanting to get involved, considering all the the restrictions and all the stuff that's happening around the world. So but I was really happy to see everyone again and go over the questions and, and just talking to the community. I also attended the Our Health, Our Home meeting, or not meeting, but it was more like a, like a forum. And I just heard some people come in and talk about housing situation in Twalatin, which we all have talked about. Mostly people who are experiencing severe rental burden. And so that was a really good, it was really good to hear from, or a good reminder that we do need housing that's attainable. I like that word attainable. So it was really good to hear the community talk about that and, and also that they really want to stay in this, in this city, in this community and be part of it. They have been part of it, but they're renting or, you know, they haven't been able to purchase a home here so they can feel that they're permanent here. So it was a really good educational meeting and I just a good reminder for me as well. Thank you. That's all.
You. Council Brooks?
I have a few. As as Maria said, I was on the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Most of the appointments were, or all of the appointments were for the Twelton Library Advisory Committee. And just, you know, it was really nice to see we had appointed a student member in the past and she reapplied. So I like the fact that a lot of the people, and I want to thank everybody that's applied because it really, the applicants really represent wide diverse group of people that live here and also just the best of what we see in community and coming together in community. So even though we can't appoint every single person onto the advisory committees, we appreciate each and every person that does apply. And, and I hope that people continue to volunteer with the library and other areas of the city and look for other advisory appointments that are opening up. Then the next one was, I also was at the, our home, our health, and just to add what Council Reyes mentioned, many people that talked at that meeting that in some ways shared their stories. Are Twelton residents that I thought should, that are self-identified as rent burdened. And it, it really helped, oops. It really helped bring the stories of people that aren't in the position to buy a home in Twelton that are renting here in Twelton. The stressors, the fears that they have and their honesty and courage and sharing their stories, also identifying their experiences as minorities in the community as well, not, I think, the majority. And the presentation put on by the AARP representative were, were really informative and concerning. And I think as we're approaching what so many are saying is going to be an eviction crisis, we, I hope that our council is very mindful of this segment of our community and appreciates their, their thoughts in very well-crafted thoughts and very honest telling of their experiences of what they're dealing with right now. So I just want to give them a big shout out because I just, it takes a lot of courage to come up and show that much vulnerability in such a public forum. And it was well worth my time. Then I had the October 7th, the Regional Water Providers Consortium, and that, I have a little bit to say about that. It was a very, it was probably one of the most packed meetings that I've attended since being on this board. We, first of all, and there's a lot of updates I want you guys to know about, there was the approval of the City of Wilsonville's request to rejoin the Regional Water Providers Consortium. So they had left after, you know, developing their water source, but realized they want to still be part of the consortium and be part of the mission of the consortium. So that was granted. And we also approved the, another membership of us going to ORWRN membership. And then we talked about the Emergency Planning and Conservation Program and up, and updated on ongoing projects and year-end accomplishments and started the budget discussion. So a lot of it has to do with the goals of coming up next year. And then finally, there was a really excellent, and I shared the video with you guys, with the members of the council about all of the different regional responses to the fires and the ability that, and I just want to really give a shout out to not, not just our city, but this whole region coming together. There were about 20% of water employees that were evacuated from their homes during the fires that were managing pump stations that were literally yards away from fires burning. And they made sure that most of the region had water to drink throughout and also messaged, because there was one area, like you guys know, up on the mountain where the water wasn't safe to drink. So they were able to message through rumors that water was not safe to drink and the realities of places where water safety was at risk. And then and able to message also that water pressure was needed to, to fight the fires and to turn off sprinkler systems throughout the area. Another thing that I learned from that presentation was the Clackamas Basin, what, where they get their water from. 23% was burned. So that's almost one quarter of the whole area where their water comes from. And they were talking about filtration of sediments. So I think it's just a very important thing to know because a lot of people don't realize it or think about it because our water has been safe and we've had access to water. But if we did lose access to water, the other thing that was wonderful was PGE working to make sure that power was continuing to water stations, especially here, also in Washington County. So just remembering that there's so much that goes on behind the scenes to make sure that we have water available to us to also know that as we have more frequent and hotter fires that planning for our, our water is something that we want to be mindful around. And so just the basic outlines of the strategic initiatives are anticipating and responding to changes in demand, population and consumer public expectations. There are parts that focus on emergency collaboration, and they've also had changes in how they've been budgeting. One final thing, and, and there's several, I can send this to anyone that's interested for the reports. But one final thing I want to highlight, I could talk for a very long time. But one more thing I wanted to highlight was that there are, there is an increase in the budget because of integration of the new census numbers that will happen. So there'll be a temporary one-year increase of a line that's usually about $8,000 to $30,000, and then it bumps back down. So if you've ever been looking at our consortium budgets, that's what that bump is about, and it will restabilize back down. And I just also want to say that they have been doing a really good job considering that there've been furloughs and other things that they've been dealing with in their budgeting and managing. And then finally, October 8th, I was at the Washington County Local Implementation Planning Committee, which is the Planning Committee for Washington County around the Metro Housing Bond. And there was a lot of, we covered the final geographic equity map. So I do feel proud that as a member to represent geographical diversity, part of the keys were in our area and also in Forest Grove where there's gaps in services. So they didn't have as many dots, and then they put the keys over that part of the map, which didn't show, which failed to highlight the need in those areas. So they adjusted those maps and the, the new maps were much better. And there was quite a strong conversation around definitions and going, I think the county is going to kind of look more carefully at definitions of 75% of the money goes to people with disabilities. And one of the concerns that a lot of the professionals at these meetings have is that some people don't self-identify as disabled. So they're difficult, so it's difficult for them to get services oftentimes. So they're really making a strong effort to be sure that whatever we design is actually applicable at a practical, on the streets kind of level, and that really reaches the populations that that money is designed to and aim to serve. So I'm really impressed by, that my colleagues and people that serve with me on this planning committee, they're really invested and have brought up really strong conversations. So we'll see how that goes further. There's preliminary ways that people, we need feedback from our area. So one of the things that the city was able to support this committee in doing was adding a piece at the end of the, the presentation that Maria and I attended for the city around health and housing to have people that are at risk of being homeless or homeless be, include feedback onto the county's initiative for planning. And that information should be available on that link on our, our website. So take a look for that if you know anyone that would fit that description. We really, really want feedback and we really want feedback from the people in our area. So that's a big ask and a big concern here, and especially with people feeling it with, with that looming eviction crisis that we're all concerned about, as well as people that are dealing with the housing crisis we had before COVID even started. And with that, I'll be quiet, enough out of me, but thank you. Nice to see everybody. And I, one last shout out also to Aquila. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and I'm going to miss you.
All right, Council President Grimes.
Thank you. There will be a Planning Commission meeting on the 15th, so three nights from now at 6:30 that I will cover. And I wanted to mention the Community Conversation on Police Use of Force. The discussion session, the very first one, is on the 14th, which is Wednesday at 6 o'clock. And people that have interest in being involved, I think you can just go to the homepage on the city's website to find out that information. And then I just wanted to echo all the wonderful things that people have been, been saying about Aquila tonight. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you and you will be so missed, not just for the quality of work you do, but the quality of person that you are. So I wish you well in your new adventure and please remember us and visit us and I'm just deeply, deeply grateful for all that you've done for us as a council and multiple councils and everything that you've done for me over the years to help my understanding grow in that area. So thank you so much and very best wishes. And we will miss you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. I, I won't ever forget you guys.
That could be a good thing or a bad thing.
No, don't forget, come back. So don't forget us, come back. That's good.
All right. I have already got a couple of things here tonight. On a, on the 8th, the Clackamas County Chair Mayor's Meeting was held where we reviewed the status of the fires Clackamas County and COVID in Clackamas County. Chair Bernard shared with us his discussions with Governor Brown. The three counties, as you all know, are linked together. So Clackamas County, Washington County, Monmouth County are linked as a region in terms of COVID review and hitting those COVID standards to move between up and down the phases. And we're struggling with that, all three counties. That all it takes is one county in one week to have a bad week and we all sit stagnant. So there is quite a bit of questions for the governor on how we can move forward. Are the metrics, are their numbers too high for the three county area? Because you've got a lot of businesses that are still sitting that can't open yet. The examples are bowling alleys, movie theaters, amusement places like Bullwinkle's that want to open, but under Phase 1, they can't. You also have restaurants who want to be open beyond 10:00 PM. So maybe make a little bit more money to cover their costs. So the request that Chair Bernard had for the governor was, is there some way using science and what we've, what we've learned from other counties to come up maybe with a Phase 1.5 for this winter? So that other businesses can open, relax restrictions for restaurants. Just gets, you know, a little bit of things, a little bit more open for the community rather than where we are right now. Because the concern that I think all three county chairs have is for if we never can get, get out of Phase 1 as a region, because each county has a flare up. You know, when are kids going to be able to go back to school in this area? So that's something that he and the other chairs are working with the governor on. And hopefully get resolutions sometime here in the next couple, three months. Because I know schools have to make a decision, you know, later in the, the winter on what they're going to do with the spring. And if we're still on Phase 1, it's going to be very difficult to open schools at that point. Today, we had the Washington County Cordeine Meeting. And good news there. Garrett kind of referred to it earlier in his presentation. Was unanimous that county M-stiff funds, there's matching monies that are requested for the Twelton Shuttle. So there's two projects with the Twelton Shuttle. One was a $65,000 matching fund request for shuttle stop improvements for the existing shuttle line to increase awareness, get a campaign out there that people know it's there, increase signage. Maybe have some benches and have some shelters for the existing shuttle line. The overall stiff request is for $260,000. So Washington County put up 65 grand or 20% in matching funds, and that was approved. The second part of the request, and one we've been talking about a lot lately, is the Bridgeport to Stafford extension of some kind of RIDE Connect line. So you would have SMART, Clackamas County and Washington County working together to have a RIDE connection line between Bridgeport and Stafford, where the RIDE Connection Shuttle would run down Borland Road, stop around Stafford and a SMART bus would pick the person up from there and take them to Oregon City. The monies would be used for a pilot program, ideally starting in next 2022, 2023, where the shuttle service would run every 30 minutes during peak hours and every hour an off-peak. The request is for $56,000 from Washington County, which is 10%. And then Clackamas County will also, ideally, they will approve this, pitch in $56,000. The overall cost request to the stiff was $775,000 for this extension of the shuttle service. So again, it was unanimously approved by Washington County. So I'm hoping our Clackamas County folks will also approve their 56 grand so that all the matching funds are required for the stiff grant can go forward. Second thing we talked about tonight, at today, was the jurisdictional transfer of 99W. Tigered is not interested at all either, assuming control of 99W. What's interesting is the study area is only about four miles of 99W, most of which is in Tigered. As Garrett so mentioned, one of the biggest reasons most of the cities is, are not interested in this is the associated cost of assuming a state facility. Mayor Truax brought up that Forest Grove actually did a few years ago assume a state highway. And the costs that were associated with that were quite substantial, that they didn't envision how much it would cost them. So that was his word of caution when, if you're too eager to take over a, a state facility, make sure you have the money to pay for it. And finally, the last big item at the Cordeine Meeting today was a review of the Burnside Bridge, the seismic retrofit. They've come upon a desired alternative, which is called the Long Span Alternative, where Burnside Bridge, we totally rebuilt and the span is quite long. Because the, if you picture where Burnside is right now, the east side of the Burnside Bridge from the river pretty much to a few blocks to the east, supposedly is on soil that will liquefy. And on the west side, it's not as bad, you know, on the city side, the downtown core. But the bridge itself would be quite big. When they build it, if this was to be approved and, and start construction, they would not have an alternative. They would just shut the bridge totally down and start taking it apart. They've done some traffic studies and according to traffic studies, would only add about five to 10 minutes to people's commutes. The shocking thing here is this alternative is the least, is the most affordable, if you will, or cheapest option. And it's only $825 million to rebuild the Burnside Bridge, which I, my eyes just started spinning that that's the cheapest option. And then finally, as Nancy mentioned, we have the Community Conversations on the Police Use of Force on Wednesday. I just want to let folks know that it will be translated. So it is, it's going to be in both Spanish and English. So our Spanish-speaking community is more than welcome to attend. We want to get as broad amount of people to attend. So there will be instantaneous Spanish translation through the Zoom meeting. That there will be no delay. There's two different channels, the Spanish channel and the English channel. And so I'm looking forward to that on Wednesday night. Anything else? All right. So we're done a little early here. So we have about a 12-minute break before we start our formal city, city council meeting. So I'll see you all back in about 12 minutes and take a break, get some water and we'll see you in a little bit.